...a certain amount of times because some, I actually watched, believe it or not, I watched the meeting because when you sit up here, you miss some things, believe me. And so I always try to watch at one time in case I've missed something. But I don't know how many times, but I would think at least three times so that people that work different shifts or whatever the case may be would be able to see it. But that's an awful lot of money, $121,200 in salary. That bothers me a little bit and programming could, Scranton Today have done some more program, yes, but they didn't have any money to do it with. I'm sure they would have been happy to put additional programming in if we were willing to give them the money and we weren't, or some of us weren't anyway. So I think in all fairness to them, that's probably why they didn't have additional programming. I don't know that there's anything we can do about it right now. ECTV is the chosen one and they're going to run this station and I don't know if we can change that. But I am a little concerned about them going black. I don't know. Could we get an update possibly? I hate to put all this stuff on you, Kay. Could we get an update from ECTV and are they still saying that they're going to take over and be operational? What is it supposed to be, the first of June? June 1st?
Well, I don't know if it's June 1st. I'm just referring to what I saw in the paper. I think that June was stated.
And are they coordinating with the people of Scranton Today for a smooth transition, excuse me, transition? You know, are we going to have a week or two with no programming or are they going to run parallel both stations in case there's startup problems? I think, I hate to refer this to like the tax office, but when they went from computer to paper, you know, I don't believe they were running parallel and we've seen what happened. So maybe, maybe we can, or they could not, we can both be operational for an overlap period of time so that we don't have any blackout. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Bush.
If I could just, though, Mr. Court, right, I'm sorry. I just wanted to add something about that. I think particularly of late, we've seen so many replays of government meetings because of the lack of funding, because they are working with a skeleton force of volunteers. Their employees went over to ECTV where they're going to be well financially remunerated for what they're doing. And in terms of government meetings, I would also say, I don't think one live broadcast and one rebroadcast 12 hours later is sufficient. Most government meetings, like city council, the zoning board, the planning commission, the school district meetings occur at 6:30 or 6 o'clock at night, which means you'll be looking at a rebroadcast at 6:00 or 6:30 a.m. I really don't think that's reaching out to the public. I also believe the primary mission of these types of PEG stations, because we after all do have Channel 44, WVIA, which does an excellent job of presenting quite a broad variety of programming 24 hours a day. I believe the primary responsibility of the PEG station should be to educate the public via government meetings, uncensored government meetings. And we can find, not only on WVIA, but those of us who have cable or satellite dishes, and I think most of us do, will find that we can turn to numerous stations for cooking shows and foreign language shows and lessons, for cultural and travel shows. And I too have watched these types of stations when I have vacationed over the last several years. And coincidentally, I, every time I turn it on, happen to be watching the same city council meetings over and over and over again. I have not seen even other government meetings on those stations in Maryland and elsewhere. But I'm not going to compare us to anyone else because I don't think right now with the straits we're in, we're so concerned with what's happening in maybe Pittsburgh or Albuquerque or as much as we are with what is happening right here in the city of Scranton and the county of Lackawanna, particularly in light of all of the highly unusual events that have come to light, that deserve answers. So now more than ever is the time to keep this station operational, not to shut it down and not to say, "We'd rather learn how to make an omelet than we'd like to know, where's our $12.2 million from the single tax office." That's it.
Couple of things that were mentioned and one that wasn't. Very often people come in with statistics dealing with the status of things in northeastern Pennsylvania and Scranton area. I would like to refer anyone who's interested to, I think it's the recent issue of Money Magazine, where Scranton was listed as the seventh best real estate market in the United States. There were a number of factors that were, that contributed to that, the criteria that were used. I don't have them available with me, but for those people who are interested, it might be worthwhile to go to Money Magazine and take a look and see what's being used to evaluate and how Scranton is, you know, does arrive at being the seventh best. Also, again, on Channel 61, I do have to say that it's one area where I have disagreed with Mrs. Gattelli. I do believe that Channel 61 serves a purpose and a very useful purpose. And I did vote at one time to return cameras to council chambers because of that. However, recent occurrences have moved the operation of, or have at least said that the operation of Channel 61 will move from Scranton Today to ECTV. And at this point in time, I believe that what we're dealing with is an illusion or a delusion that somehow Scranton Today will continue to operate that channel. I would say that if I were going to vote to give money to anyone, it would be to ECTV so that they could take over the operation at this time and move forward. They are the ones who will be the operators of, or the providers for the public access channel. I have no desire to see that go away. As I said, I believe that public access TV and the broadcast of government meetings are an important part of what we do as a community. It is some people's only access to their government and they deserve to have the opportunity to see that. What I do disagree with is, you know, the manner in which it will happen. And I would, I am in favor of pushing ECTV to start the transition period and to be here to continue the telecast of council meetings, of zoning meetings, of whatever other meetings take place. I think that is an important thing that they do, that is done for our community and it should continue. And the last thing that I would like to comment on is the project in 500 Lackawanna Avenue. The legislation that's before us is legislation for a grant through, and I went back to it, through the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. It is not asking to move funding from anywhere else in OECD or any other sources of revenue or sources of funds. It is for a specific grant from a specific source. It is only authorizing the city and the developer to apply for a grant. As far as I'm concerned, it's a, it's a no lose situation. If a million dollars or any amount could be obtained through some source, I don't see what negative that can have for the development of Lackawanna Avenue. That money, that money is designated for certain purposes. This, the restoration or the improvement of that park area through the Park Service is an eligible project and I think that it is in our best interest to apply for the grant. I don't see how there can be any objection to asking someone to give the city a million dollars. I don't know how that in any way translates as negative. And I was also told that if granted, it's not necessarily a million dollars. The Department of Conservation and Natural Resources could, you know, change that amount. It's up to a million, you know, they're applying for a grant of up to a million dollars. The department could change that amount and provide any amount that they saw fitting, less than that. And that that money would then go not to the developer but to OECD and that all of the funding that, or the, that money would then be given out to, through OECD and not through the developers, not through whatever that development company, I think it's 500 Lackawanna Avenue Development or whatever. So I see it as a very positive thing for us to do without any real negatives. And again, as Mrs. Evans said, an enjoyable Memorial Day for all and again, take some time to, take some time to honor those who have given their lives for the betterment of all of us. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Fifth order, 5B for introduction. Resolution approving revision of the existing traffic signal at the intersection of Main Avenue and Lackawanna Avenue due to the addition of the new driveway approach to Main Avenue in conjunction with the proposed development of Jay's comments.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
Mrs. Garvey, before you read 7A, I'd like to make a motion that we table 7A.
On the question?
Uh...
Go ahead.
No, I, I just wanted to inquire why you're suggesting the table.
Some of the questions, I only really, I wanted two questions that I had asked to be answered, haven't been answered, and I'm also waiting to see the answer to some of the questions that you have asked.
Yes, I too, I can say if this goes ahead tonight, I cannot approve of a project although it appears to be a very worthy project, a win-win project, but it certainly does raise red flags when a letter is sent out on May 14th, it's now May 20th, and I've not received responses to very important questions. And another concern I have involves both Coney Island and Buena Pizza. I know that this grant involves that park area in the back, but you know, I think this is going to be an attraction that will benefit the entire block. And to date, I still don't know where those two businesses stand in terms of eminent domain, in terms of the streetscape project, who is included, who has been discluded. But more than that, or probably I should better say, equally as important, I'd like my questions answered before you ask me to vote on something. And it was noted earlier by one of the speakers, I think Mr. Spraglia perhaps, that he saw an advertisement connected to this project. And indeed, he's right because although I couldn't receive the responses to my questions, I did receive a letter from OECD dated ironically, May 20th, letting us know that the amended mandatory pre-bid conference for this project will be held at the Office of OECD on Friday, June 6th. So it appears that certainly this has already been decided before I voted. No wonder I don't need answers to my questions. So this, you know, I have great concern with that office and as I said, I am, I am not moving ahead on any of these things until I get information on which I can make an educated judgment on behalf of the taxpayers.
Anyone else? Motion to table Item 7A. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, no business at this time, and seventh order's been tabled.
A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you for your participation.
Hello, I'm Karen Bizzari, President of Scranton Today STTV Board of Directors, a group of civic-minded volunteers who have managed the operation of TV 61 for the past 10 years. I'm here today to correct some misinformation and address the political allegations made about STTV at the May 20th council meeting. During council's comments, STTV was criticized for seeking funding only from city council and not from the county commissioners or the Scranton School Board. The reality is that both the school board and the previous and current county commissioners have provided financial support to this station. It's only the city of Scranton that's been unwilling to provide its fair share. As far back as August of 2006, Scranton Today requested $7,000 from the OECD, which we've never received. It's also important to note that Scranton Today has actively solicited support from the community at large. In fact, almost half of our operating budget comes from donations and sponsorships. STTV's detailed budget containing all this information was presented to council in October 2007 and is always available on our website at www.scrantontoday.org. We've also been criticized for our policy of rebroadcasting government meetings. Frankly, we believe that repeat airings of government meetings allow more citizens to view their government in action, and in a democracy, nothing is more important. Of course, viewers always have the choice to change the channel. Finally, I was very disappointed by the allegation that TV 61 has become political. This is simply not true. Since our beginning in 1999, we have always been completely apolitical and nonpartisan. Some would argue to the detriment of our own survival. STTV has always presented public meetings in their entirety unabridged and unedited. We've always cable cast all programs that were submitted to us regardless of the political affiliation of the producer. Over the course of the last 10 years, elected officials of all parties at the local, state, and national levels have been afforded equal access to TV 61. STTV TV 61 has never been about politics. It's always been about government, in particular, open government. I hope the facts I presented here today will finally set the record straight. Thank you for your time.
He has his, you know, distance limitations to a mile, a mile and an eighth, mile and a quarter in Derby, mile and three sixteenths in the Greatness. And, you know, being a Philadelphia-based horse, there's no doubt about that because he probed his maiden in Philadelphia Park. You know, it's, for a town like Philadelphia who, you know, they really wear their hearts and their sleeves. It's just a real special thing to, something to grab on to, like the Phillies, the Flyers, the Sixers, the Eagles. It's, it's just a, one of those things that don't help your fans and really takes their hearts. And, you know, he's already won his championship. He's won the Kentucky Derby, so everything else is more or less gravy. But Sencer has not been a Triple Crown winner in 26 years. And this would just be apparently achieving a great, great career undoubtedly. And we're all reforming came up here, we rented a minivan to go up from, actually, Wellington, Delaware, on the Delaware Valley. And, you know, it'd just be great to be here and hopefully have him win and continue all of his, all of his success.
You said, "Hopefully have him win." Isn't there any doubt he's going to win?
You know what? I'm a pretty, you know, I'm a pretty objective horse player, but I mean, the more I look at his past performances, I always like to go for some value, but when it comes to Smarty, that horse is automatic as the sun coming up in the east. He does, nothing bothers him. The track today, throwing the nine horses, the best he can possibly have, because everything goes on the left-hand side of him, he can just rate off the pace or go onto the lead. Hopefully he'll rate a little bit, stay outside in the middle of the track because Belmont, the Belmont race, the main track, is always kind of plays from the outside in. It does not really favor the rail. You kind of want to be in the middle of the track four or five passes out and hopefully Stuart Elliott will know that. And when he wins, it'll just be a, just a great day for all the Philadelphia sports families.
I love Smarty. I love Philadelphia. I love horse racing. I've been at a Derby, you know, back in '78, I seen the last Triple Crown winner for '78, '79, '80, '81. We're there. I went to school in Ohio. I love Smarty because I saw Smarty race the first time at Philadelphia Park in November. I didn't bet on him, but I said, "Man, look at that horse run. You don't believe it. He blew everybody away." So I thought, I said, "This horse is special." I says, thinking back on my, "Ain't no Derby horses come from Philadelphia Park." But then, then all of a sudden, you see, you start seeing, he goes out and then... He's a market soul and he does well out there. I'm on a Smarty wagon. I've been on a Smarty van, Mike, since the beginning. Smarty's been very, very good to me.
What do you love about Smarty the most?
His epic story. Yeah, the movie. The story about everything, all the connections, everything. It's just a wonderful story.
Tell us a little more about the story. Tell us about that.
Well, he almost killed himself in the gate when he was a two-year-old. How John Servis is Bernie Caron's nephew. How John Servis's sister is a nun, she brings money up from the combat, they bet on the horse. There's all kinds of different, it's just, it's a great story. The Chapmans, you know, they call themselves Hammond Eggers.
I bought two cars from them.
Yeah, and...